...to, okay, so it is 5:30 PM. I'd like to call the budget hearing to order. Okay, we have, oh, I have to get Maureen on FaceTime, sorry. So I'm gonna do that real quick while, and then we'll do the pledge to the flag because I told Maureen she would be part of this.
Right.
So I'm going to, give one moment.
So if she's participating remotely, then you can call it to order with a roll call vote.
Okay, so ready to roll call vote, it's called to order. I'm gonna get Maureen on the phone quickly first. Hi, Maureen, okay, I'm gonna turn you so that you can see the crowd, okay? Crowd one, yes, crowd, crowd of Mrs. Maureen, okay? All right, I'm gonna put you right next to me. We need a roll call vote to begin the budget hearing since you are removed. Okay?
Yes.
Okay? Kendall?
Yes.
Maureen?
Here.
Right, I'm here. Yes, so, right, so, budget hearing has begun. Can you stand for the pledge to the flag? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Did you open the budget hearing with a roll call vote?
Yes, I did.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Fantastic, then we're ready to roll.
All right, well, thank you for coming, and thank you for accommodating it on this evening instead of in a full school committee meeting. It helps us to kind of get a little ahead of the timeline so we can present at the Board of Select next Tuesday. So with that, we'll want to write in, I want to thank folks for coming tonight, and as a reminder, I told the principals that only if their schedule allowed that we would, you know, that they would come tonight because it was kind of an off-schedule meeting. So here we go. So as always, we have an overview. We will talk about our budget development, our assumptions, our priorities, school and program specifics, budget summary snapshots, and overall recommendations. Not to give away the ending, but it's very similar to the budget preview with a lot of extra detail. Not much changed monetarily, except for we shore some things up, we, you know, make sure that things balance out, but it's very similar to what you saw a few weeks ago. As a reminder, our budget development involves multiple stakeholders, our administrators, our educators, through their needs assessment, we do it through the Budget and Facilities Subcommittee, we also speak frequently with town administration. So what we're presenting tonight is in line with the placeholder that town administration put in January, so you'll see that it's an overall 4% increase. And so we continue on. Here's our timelines, which I'll recap at the end, but our next major hurdle after hopefully a positive vote tonight will be that we go to the Board of Select meeting on Tuesday, and then we continue our refinement until we get to the annual and special town meeting, where we hopefully will have a very positive reception from our voters, and that's when our budget is locked in. So as usual, this is the same slide every year with a few tweaks. So we have revenue assumptions, this is the money that we're assuming we'll have access to next year. As I say, we have what's provided by the town, we have what's provided through offsets, and so that's school choice and tuition programs, local, state, and federal grants at the FY25 levels, who are assuming they'll be at the same or similar levels. We also utilize circuit breaker, military mitigation, and we're expecting those to be funded at traditional levels. As I said earlier, the projected town revenue to support a 4% increase to last year's budget, and our regular Chapter 70 Student Opportunity Act at the current governor's budget. I believe it's going to the House next, but in the governor's budget, the Chapter 70 was already increased to the usual SOA, so that's good news for our town. We also have planning assumptions, so of course we want to maintain our high-quality programs, we want to meet the needs of all learners, we want to have class sizes for expected enrollment, so again, these class sizes will be healthy class sizes, we're not ballooning to any crazy, you know, 30 students in a room type of thing. We have inclusive and equitable practices, and this budget supports our three-year district strategy and our SIPs, which remember, that's ending this year, but it supports the continuation of all of that work with our anticipated new district strategic plan, which we'll be excitedly talking about next week. All right, so this is a reminder about our district strategy, it's been in place for actually four years because we did have a year zero, and with building community, promoting equity, striving for excellence, and then for the public, this is linked, it shows you our district action plan for the last three years, and it shows you all three, oh, excuse me, all four of our school improvement plans, and this budget is aligned with continuing all of those efforts. All right, so I'll be presenting the two elementary slides, these are written by the principals, and they kind of give you a broad overview of what this budget supports. So the site-based budget is a figure that is all-in, everything that it costs to run that school, and it changes from year to year, it kind of depends on salaries mostly. But here in the bullets, and I know it's really hard to read, so I will read all of it, it talks about kind of where the money's going and how the efforts that we've really put in the past few years are going to continue. I'll try to give you all the acronyms and what they stand for as we go. So in Bourndale Elementary, ARC, which is American Reading Company, is in year six of its implementation, I remember when we were first talking about year one, and it's expected resources with a focus on creating 90-minute schedules and fitting in ARC and UFLY, which is the new phonics supplemental program, and a writing supplemental program. So for those of you who are aware of especially elementary literacy, and I'm giving a nod over to Maureen who's remote today, we really want to have 90-minute reading blocks that has a very, you know, it's focused on not only our reading comprehension, but our phonics and our writing, so we're very excited about that. In Bourndale, while they won't have any direct professional development with Allison Mellow, who as you know people rave about, she has wonderful professional development in math, they're going to continue to follow the math vision and expectations from math workshop, and they also have benchmarks and end-of-module assessments that are to be common across the grade levels. All of that math and math workshop progress will continue. During WIN, which is the What-I-Need period, and CPT, which is Common Planning Time for Teachers, they'll continue to be part of the master's schedule and regularly seek and receive feedback based on teacher input, while also looking for ways to increase efficiency and best practices for students. The schedule really drives instruction, and so to know that a master's schedule still has both of those really strong components, personalized learning for children, and Common Planning Time for Teachers, is really important. The support of the interventionist position is appreciated and tremendously needed with this and Title I being part of the primary literacy intervention, so this budget continues to have both interventionist position, which was originally funded through ESAR, and the Title I position, which we hope will continue going forward. So our benchmarking cycles continue to take place three times a year, discussions continue to take place during Common Planning Time of groupings. The BES data team also facilitates benchmark data conversations with all staff to understand the assessments given, see student growth in areas for improvement, and provide feedback for goals that can be set for students across all settings. So again, all of this good work that we laid the foundation for will continue at Bourndale. So moving to born intermediate school, there's a lot of continue, 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 because again, the foundation was laid, so I'll read this one for you. So a born intermediate school, to continue to expand school enrichment opportunities, clubs, and curriculum-based events for students. Continue to support high-quality Tier One instruction across all content areas through ongoing professional development. And for those out there who don't know what Tier One means, it means the classroom instruction that's for everyone all the time. Continue to support the math workshop model and implementation for all students in grades three through five. Continue to support the implementation of the literacy block for all students in grade three through five. If you recall, when this presentation is usually given by the principals, they say ditto because the elementary is very aligned in what they're doing. Continue to build a data-driven school community to proactively support all students' academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs. Continue emphasis on the co-teaching model and inclusionary practices for special education. As you remember, we rolled that out about three years ago, four years ago, and we're continuing the best practices of that schedule where we have co-teachers for special education and as much inclusion as possible for our students. Continue to expand the extracurricular activities for all students at BIS, and continue to strengthen the social-emotional support of all students through BIS through the implementation of school-wide SEL curriculum. So that is Bourndale, and then Ms. Maureen is going to speak to both the middle school and the high school floors, so.
Good evening, thanks. So my slide, I think, looks a little bit different, but as you heard last week, we are adjusting our staffing levels fairly significantly in order to align with the current enrollment, and you heard Dr. Joe speak about that at the beginning of the presentation. I will say, and I think you heard last week, that it has been an overall positive process for our building. We were able to really capitalize on some retirements and some changes to adjust the amounts of homerooms to be really appropriate to the amount of students that we have, and yet not feel like we're losing anything in terms of the student experience and instruction. So we are aligning the staffing to six, sixth-grade homerooms, six seventh-grade homerooms. We will continue with that eighth grade is quite a large grade, the current seventh grade going up is a large grade, that will continue to have eight homerooms. We will have seven unified arts teachers, which is a change from eight. We will continue to have two Spanish teachers. We have one media specialist that was not added to this list, but we will continue to maintain our media specialist. Two directed support teachers, which are, I'm gonna circle back to those, three counselors, one per grade, as we have had, and then seven special education teachers. So that will be one education teacher per team, which is the model we currently have, a really strong co-teaching model. And then we have two programmatic teachers, special education teachers, which will maintain those programs. I do want to go back and just speak to the intervention-directed support teachers for a minute. That is actually something that through this staffing adjustment, we were able to improve. Right now, we have a wonderful directed support teacher, it's Carrie Boyles, she's also our theater teacher, she has a limited amount of time in her schedule to teach directed support. She's very dynamic and she has a lot of expertise, so it's worked out well. But Mr. Landell also carries a pretty hefty teaching load this year of more and more students in directed support that need math help. So we were able to, through shifting our staffing around a little bit, move to a model next year where we will have one math-specific directed support teacher and one ERA-specific directed support teacher. And as we continue to talk about improving for these intervention roles, I think that is huge in terms of just really ensuring that all of our students are getting what they need for grade-level mastery, where they'll be able to work with those teachers, and I think that model is also going to be able to hopefully provide some fluidity where students can come and go from that program in order to get the support that they need, but it might not necessarily be locked into their schedule forever. If they reach grade level, they'll be able to kind of float back into what would be maybe a more typical schedule. So we're really excited about that in terms of not just maintaining a Tier Two support that we have, general Tier Two support that we have, but in fact, increasing it. Everything else I said last time too when we presented, but the student experience otherwise really will not be drastically different. We still will be offering a really rich array of unified arts courses, we still will be offering Spanish, and we still will be having teachers in each subject area that are content specialists. So I think overall, even though we did have some fairly large staffing changes for the building and definitely appropriate for their enrollment, we're really seeing it as a positive. We also will continue to support WIN, and, you know, we will absolutely have continued implementation of all of the wonderful curricular work that we've had going on. Springboard is continuing in ERA, math workshop is going incredibly well at the middle school, so we really anticipate that just even being better. Our science teachers are making huge starts working with Karen Rose, and our social studies teachers are all working using the Investigating History curriculum, which is continuing to come out from the state, so we're very great about that. And then again, the high school, I mean, so much momentum, and to just see all of these programs continuing and expanding. So continuing to implement and expand the programs that are currently being offered for students, just in the process, and I believe Chris is diligently working on a budget for the new computer science faculty, and pursuing, I know that Dr. McGuire has been in frequent conversation with Mass Maritime to pursue the early college designation through Mass Maritime, so such exciting opportunities for our students. Continuing to support that grade-level, high-quality Tier One instruction, you know, that's quite a thing that you've heard us talk about at all of the buildings, but that is constantly a focus. And the same inclusion model that we've worked out at each building with special education practices, and focusing on again, just those standards-based objectives, grade-level mastery, and increasing that high-quality student discourse. Continuing to evaluate and replace curriculum resources at the high school and textbooks, again, to support those high-quality learning experiences, I know that's something we've been working on significantly this year and will continue. Continuing to support the WIN block, their WIN block runs a little different, where students have a lot of choice and autonomy in WIN block to get really personalized instruction, extra help, enrichment interventions. Continue to offer rich and diverse co-curricular and athletic opportunities, and continue to strengthen the social-emotional supports for all students.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, so we've got two slides that are possibly three, I'd have to look for it, about proposed changes, some of it you've already heard, but I'm just unpacking this a little bit. So the positive slide, again, as I said, all of these are aligned with our school improvement plans, our SIPs, and our strategy. So our staffing has reallocation, but it also has rescheduling, and, you know, Ms. Maureen didn't say it, but there was an incredible amount of work that really went into, to make the student experience the same, if not better, we had to really look at scheduling and leveraging and being able to do that. So it's not complete yet, but we know that we'll be able to accomplish this. And as you heard, in all of the different schools, we still have intervention, enrichment, and co-teaching models. These are expensive models to have, but they really are the gold standards for students, and we didn't want to see that go by the wayside even though ESAR money has, you know, run dry. So I feel really proud about the fact that we're able to do this for students, and I do feel that even though it might take a little time, we'll see huge benefits in the coming years. Programmatic and curriculum-wise, we are specifically investing in the ESL curriculum. Again, we had a state audit, we've had a lot of state audits this year, our number just came up, and one of their findings was we needed a very specific ESL curriculum, so we'll invest in that. We'll have professional development and adoption of a UFLY phonics curriculum and a writing program, and then lots and lots more PD on Tier One instructional best practices. And then in other categories, which there, you know, there are many, important to know is we're restarting our leasing cycle for our buses. We have our buses through the Cape Cod Collaborative. Last year, we were able to take a hiatus for this because we had a leasing cycle and we met those needs, so we had a pause, that's kind of what helped our budget last year, but now we need to restart that in the next, I believe, five-year cycle, and purchase new buses every so many years so that we don't end up with buses that break all the time. So this budget has that, we're on track with that cycle. We support, we need to support the increased cost of special education, you've heard me talk about this at a few different meetings, these are costs that are driven by inflation, driven by out-of-district costs. So it's for our in-house programming, meaning to meet the needs of students in-house, and also for out-of-district tuition, transportation, and staffing. So that is something driving budgets across the state, and again, we need to meet the needs of all learners, so this budget supports that. And then there's minimal funding that's in there to support some new strategic initiatives apart of the new strategic plan. Again, we didn't want to cut so deep that we wouldn't have a little bit of a cushion to be able to accomplish some of those action steps right away. All right, so I think Ms. Maureen really said eloquently some of the things that went into the thinking around the middle school, but this slide just kind of lays it out very plainly, kind of what are the reductions? And again, as we talk about a level-serviced budget, this is a somewhat level-serviced budget, because a level service means that you have everything that you had before at the inflationary costs. If we were doing that, we'd be at a 7% increase. So with that, we did some creative thinking, we did some reallocations and reductions, and essentially, Mrs. Maureen already spoke to that. So when we did all of those things, we had nine total reductions in full-time staff, it was a net of seven after some reallocations, as you heard about the directed support positions, and we have some part-time staffing reductions in more of the elementary lunch recess monitors. So with that all said in the salary lines, we were able to get down to 4%. So again, proposed changes continues, there are reductions based on enrollment and rescheduling, but we're continuing all current programming with revised curriculum, scope, and sequence for technology and STEAM, and for health and PE. So Ms. Maureen said specifically at that level that we're still having a robust offering of all the unified arts. There might be less people in the mix because we need less places because we have less homerooms, but we're going to have a curriculum that will still cover all the components that the standards need to be covered. We'll have some smaller reductions in professional services. Barbara and her team did a really great job, as they do every year, to streamline and reduce digital subscriptions. We really polled to see like what's getting good usage, what's the most effective, and they were able to kind of cull that down. Of course, all the digital subscriptions continue to go up with inflation, but we, you know, we're able to still keep the programs that we need for kids. All right, so now I'm gonna pass the baton over to Dr. Starkey, who will take the next few slides.
Thank you very much. Tonight's budget request in terms of teaching and learning supports classroom supplies across the entire district, supports the use of topical and timely curriculum building-based activities, seeks the renewal, as Dr. Joe just said, of instructional subscriptions that we do use here in the district. And again, we did cull that list to keep just simply what's relevant and what's going to be best for our students. Renewal of online text resources, some of those textbooks that we have that have online subscriptions are coming due, so it's time to renew those. And continued implementation of pre-AP where relevant at the high school per-year program of studies presentation that you had a few months ago. Continued implementation of innovation pathways and educational pathways. Christine Maureen hit upon that when she talked about the high school. Continued implementation of WIN and tiered interventions across the district. A lot of this seems quite repetitive once you hear what's happening in the schools, right? Purchasing of instructional materials, materials to support UFLY and any of the other new programs we're looking to adopt in the district. We're hoping to bring a K through five writing program to you before the end of the year. Actually, that'll be a topic at the Curriculum Subcommittee meeting that's coming up. We'd also like to bring forward an SEL curriculum that'll be used in the district, and then, as Dr. Joe pointed out before, we need to address the TFM findings related to an ESL curriculum here in the district. And then moving on, in terms of professional development, this budget will support the continuation of much of the good professional development that you've heard about and that the teaching staff and ESPs in the district have really appreciated having. Everything from Allison Mellow, who's worked her way up to now the secondary level, working predominantly with the middle school, to Colise Warnham, who came and gave a keynote and is looking to come back into the district next year and work specifically with teachers. And then also to continue to support the MTSS model that we have here in the district, bolstering our Tier One practices for everyone, and then enhancing Tier Two and Tier Three practices for our students who need those. I think that's the end of me. I think we go to, I pass it off to Director of Student Services, Kristen Donahue.
Thank you, thank you. And again, some of this is a little bit repetitive, but as Dr. Starkey mentioned, we are looking at the exploration of a social-emotional curriculum for pre-K through 12. That will be a focus, as well as enhancement of our continued behavioral support systems through different activities and different initiatives to help keep students involved and engaged and have positive connections and relationships throughout the school. So certainly, ongoing work regarding our mental health support, substance abuse prevention, all the partnerships bringing in speakers for students, as well as having resources not only within the school, but access throughout the community. So specific to special education, as you've heard, we are knee-deep in the new Massachusetts IEP. So as we've gotten through kind of the preliminary steps of that, next year, the focus will really be on goal writing and specific data collection. We can always do better with that, but that really, using data to drive the individual goals and objectives for students is key. It allows us to definitely progress monitor and make changes to delivery as appropriate, so that will be a strong emphasis. We continue, as Dr. Joe, Dr. Starkey mentioned, our strong inclusion model, working on really trying to embed and make commonplace our UDL practices and shared conversations and best interest for all students. Again, special ed just had a TFM as well, so we will be getting some feedback from that, but I anticipate that we'll have some compliance findings that will just really have to tighten up our practices related to our policies and procedures and implementation, but that's yet to be kind of finalized and articulated, so that's anticipated. And continued growth of CPAC, and I am really proud of, it was a small but mighty group, but it's made a steady commitment, so I anticipate seeing that continue to grow. And just including here, it's been said already, but focusing on English-language learners, continuing with pre-teachers, and the expansion of the ESL curriculum that we're mandated to have.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. All right, technology, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Dr. Joe. Good evening, everyone. So the FY26 Technology Operating Budgets, $546,395, an additional amount of $57,834 is funded by the federal E-Rate program. That brings us total all-in for the Technology Department at approximately $604,229. That includes our staff, our contract renewal subscriptions, as well as supplies and equipment such as our computers and Chromebooks. So a little bit more about what is the support. Network equipment and services, those are our servers, our data racks, things that are in the closet that are, no one usually sees, but they're vital to providing internet and network capabilities to our staff and students. It also supports our data backups. As we know, in recent times, that data backups are extremely important with everything going on with cyber attacks and other things in the community, that it's certainly important to have our data backups, and those are off-site as well. We have our internet circuits and bandwidth, and that price also includes a new, since Verizon has come into town, I'm going with a second internet connection, so if something happens to our primary one, we'll have a secondary internet connection going out, and I think that's important because our staff and faculty rely on our internet every single day for instruction. Also includes Chromebook and computer upgrades across the district. There's certainly some money earmarked there, we're gonna continue to replace our classroom desktop computers, as well as look to start replacing, cycling out some of our teacher Chromebooks that were given out about three or four years ago. We're also including some enhanced antivirus and Gmail or email scanning, cybersecurity testing. The E-Rate, about $57,000, part of that is gonna go towards upgrading our Wi-Fi in all the classrooms at the Bourne Intermediate School, believe it or not, it's already time to look and recycle that out. And continued upgrades around integrated security systems such as door fob, security cameras, and other aspects of that nature. And finally, daily parts and repair of classroom office technology through work orders, through the work and help of myself, Nick Uchikounas, and Debis Net in the Technology Department. So that is what the FY26 Technology Budget is made up of.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Geist, will you help us with the pie charts?
Pie charts are pretty self-explanatory, they're very beautiful.
They're vibrant.
I was going for vibrant, thank you, Oliver. I thought Emily was gonna come up with that, but didn't wear the T-shirt, so.
It's under, it's under there, right?
Yes, it is. As you can see, salaries make up the most significant part of our budget, $15,465,279. Textbooks coming at $587,198, built-in operations at about $1.6 million, and student services at $7.2. The offsets this year, circuit breaker, $1.4 million, military mitigation, $998,000, school choice just over a million, for a total of $4,525,292. And our year-over-year increase showing an increase of 4% over last year's $2.83, or this, now this year's $2.83. And you have the entire budget spreadsheet link there, as well as in front of you, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions you all have, with the help of my colleagues who live to the right of me.
And for those watching at home, you can click right into it and get all seven pages with, how many lines, 400 and something? Two, 200 and something. And it does show each category with the very specific spending in each category increases. It shows actual budget expended, and then the different budgets over the course of different years. So a lot of data there. If people choose to print it, you want to get the legal-sized paper ready to go. Yeah, we'd be happy to entertain any questions and then move on to the very end of this presentation. I can keep going down.
Increase in mid-transportation is because of the leasing of the buses. That's why it looks like that.
So we'll keep going through, and there'll be time for questions again as well. So here's the very final ending. So we're recommending an operating budget of $27,718,000 and $638,000, hundred, excuse me, represents a 4.0 increase over the FY25 approved budget. Keep in mind, there's an asterisk here that thanks to your work, the select work, we're able to tap into the Special Ed Reserve Fund, so these numbers will be slightly different, but it's 4% over the approved budget of last year. And that's the number that that would be. As I said previously, our next steps are, hopefully, that you'll vote to approve this recommended budget. On Tuesday, we'll go to the Board of Select's income meeting. The state will, at some point in time, finalize their budget. It will go through, you know, through all of their reconciliation process. And then we also have the annual and spring town meeting that will approve this and the capital requests that we have. I love some of these pictures.
I know, I just keep smiling.
And these are all this year.
I know, they are coming.
So much that happens this year, and I love seeing year-over-year the little faces grow up because, you know, I see them in their classrooms, but I also see them in these pictures that live on, so it's beautiful. So here's our last one, and we're more than happy to take any questions that you have, knowing that you had the preview before and you've had, you know, the other versions of this budget, so there may not be that many questions, but we're more than happy to answer whatever you see. Questions? Maureen?
I just have a question for Christine, I guess, since it's the middle school. How are we compensating for the, we read, application of the Health, STEAM, and Digital Literacy standards being taught? Since those teachers won't be there, there's not going to be a class for each of those anymore, if I understand what you're writing. And I know the standards are going to be redistributed to different subject areas, if that's right. So will students still be receiving like the same amount of instructional time in health that they would have if they had a dedicated teacher for health? And the same thing for STEAM and Digital Literacy?
Yes, thanks, Maureen. That's a good question. Sorry that I didn't address that earlier on in my slide. So one of the biggest things is that by looking at the class sizes, we were able to make some adjustments also to how the staff that we are maintaining is going to work. So we will have one PE teacher, and then we will have one health and wellness teacher. And so that course will be taught by a certified health teacher, Mrs. Zill, who also will incorporate movement into that class and cover the health standards and some fitness movement standards. And so students will receive both of those courses throughout their time and, each year. So there's, so that, kind of to that, they will still continue to receive health, and they will still receive all of the health standards that they're currently receiving in a class that is dedicated to health. In terms of the ETEC class, those, ETEC-specific standards are actually part of the science framework, so those will be managed in the science classes. And then Judy Liddeday, who is our coding teacher, is expanding her curriculum to include some more STEAM-based components and digital literacy. She's looking primarily at the digital literacy and that. So her class will be more of a STEAM class, and then students will be receiving that quarter of the science standards that's adding into the science class. And the teachers have already started working towards that with Karen Rose and just also in collaboration with one another. So again, I think while, yes, it sounds on paper like there's a real strong reduction, I think because of the amount of homerooms and the amount of teachers that are needed to kind of cover each thing, it seems we'll still be receiving a very equivalent curriculum experience.
Thank you. And one other question is, are we looking at purchasing an ESL curriculum or using our staff to write an ESL curriculum?
That's yet to be determined. Maureen, we are, we're looking at both avenues right now. There are some packaged curricula available, but we're not sure if they're best fit. And we do have three teachers here in the district who are certainly able, capable, and willing to do some curriculum writing. So we're exploring both avenues, and we'll be bringing you a response closer to the end of the year.
Thank you. And I just want to conclude by, again, thanking the administrative team and all the staff that contributed input into bringing this budget forward with thoughts to staying within that 4%. So thank you for your efforts.
Any other questions? Okay, so we need a vote. And again, I mean, if we have questions, we can always email or ask if questions arise. Okay, we need a vote then to approve the fiscal year '26 budget.
Second.
I move that we approve the proposed 2026 budget for Bourne Public Schools.
I second. So it's a roll call vote. Donnell? Yes. Kat?
Yes.
Kendalyn?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
And I say yes. Fiscal year '26 budget approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your work. We look forward to hearing, you know, that this gets approved at the town level. And, yeah, that's it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or anything, or comments or anything you need to?
I'm just appreciative of the work that goes into this, and I'm appreciative for the reception that you give it. I can tell that by the head nods, you know all the things we're saying, you know, we're going into detail because, you know, there might be people at home watching who really want to know all these aspects, but you're such an active school committee, so your questions are always, you know, on point and just giving a little bit more flesh to the bone of what we're doing here. But we're really proud of the work we've done, and I'm really proud that we're able to continue to fund the continuation of that work. There's a lot of places that are, are cutting in ways that will be really detrimental to kids because, you know, they, they're not able to fund. So I'm also thankful for moving this forward, that the town was able to put 4% toward our budget, and I, and I really think there'll be great outcomes next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
You take it?
Roll call vote to adjourn. Kat?
Yes.
Kendalyn?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Donnell? I say yes. Meeting adjourned. It is 6:09 PM. Maureen, thanks for attending, even though you're away on vacation.
Thank you for bringing me in.
Have a good one. Bye-bye. Bye, everyone.
Thanks.
Did you see the hand?